Welcome to our, Tom's here, right, everybody, okay. Welcome to our regular September Board meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Valletto Fries.
Here.
Scott Latham.
Here.
Tom Grattan.
Here.
Tom Kennedy.
Here.
Brian Tobin. In the event of an emergency, the visitors are advised that they may exit this room from the one side door which leads directly into the parking lot. In the event of an emergency, everyone is asked to move away from the building. Do not attempt to leave in your automobile since this may cause traffic problems and block incoming emergency vehicles.
Thank you. Before we begin, will our new student representative introduce themselves to the board and everyone else? And then at the end of the meeting, you'll have an opportunity to speak, okay?
Hi, I'm Jordan Cullen. I'm the student body president for the 2024-2025 school year, and I'm a senior at Southhold.
Welcome. We're happy to have you. Okay, that brings us to, you're going to do the presentation first?
Yep.
All right, so I'll turn that to you.
So, you know, for the last part of the year, there were a lot of questions about requirements and offerings, and so, you know, Patricia, who is doing her administrative work, put together a presentation with us, and Lisa's going to help share it, so I'm going to pass it off to them, and I'm going to ask, do we want to just turn around, or do we want to go to the other side?
I can't turn, I have to move, sorry.
Yeah, I think maybe we'll go the other side, and this way, we can all see it. Eric got it up for you on here?
Yes.
You guys are good to go?
I did.
So, I'm going to pass it on to you guys now, okay?
Thank you for, of course, coming to the board meeting. It's nice to see a great crowd like this, and I want to thank the board for having me present tonight, and Dr. Morrow, and of course, the support of Dr. Semenetti. It's always a pleasure working with her. And I'm the literacy teacher here at Southhold for grades seven through 12, and I am so honored to be working here at Southhold for, I guess, over 10 years now, which is amazing. So tonight, what I'm actually presenting is the Southhold High School requirements in comparison to what the New York State requires in order to graduate. So, tonight here, I'm going to show you what we offer, the unique course offerings that we have, and the opportunities we have.
Otherwise, it's not going to come out. People are just going to see you without, you know, you're on the recording.
That's okay. 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 So, I'm going to show you the unique course offerings that Southhold has to offer, and why it's so special between the actual graduation requirements, and like I said, everything that Southhold has to offer. So what I'm going to do is just show you the actual New York State graduation requirements, which is a minimum of 22 credits in your core subjects, your electives, physical education and health, and the arts and technology. So we're going to talk about later in the presentation, the options that students have when it comes to taking electives. So here are the passing scores for each one of the regents there. Students need to score 65% or higher on regents examinations on the following subjects: English Language Arts, of course, math, science, and social studies. There is currently an initiative by the New York State to redesign assessments and the structure of the graduation requirements for New York State. The goal that they're heading towards is to replace the three diploma options with one diploma options and seals along with endorsements that could be added to the diploma. Right now, there's not enough information to share or details to give further information at this time. So here is Southhold's graduation pathways. One is the local diploma, again, to receive 22 credits and pass five regents exams. The second is a regent's diploma, where students who are pursuing this regent's diploma would need to score 65% or higher on five state regents exams. The advanced regent's diploma, students have to score 65% or higher on nine regents exams. Here at Southhold, students in grades nine through 12 are now required to complete 20 hours of community service. Okay, so, the great thing that our school offers, which is an excellent opportunity for students who want to receive college credit, can take AP or advanced placement courses in various subjects here: science, language, literature, history, and math. So, we have here at Southhold high expectations for student achievement, and the students have the opportunities to take these courses as they can prepare for college. And we're going to look at the, they need to score three or higher on the exams in order to receive college credit. So we also offer, in addition to that, these college courses. We are affiliated with Suffolk Community College, Stony Brook University, Five Towns, and SUNY Farmingdale. The students have an excellent opportunity to take these courses because, also not only due to the cost, which is reduced compared to the actual cost of a college course, but it also advances them. They could graduate here with a semester of, or even a year of college credit. So students can earn AP and college credits and begin their college right here in high school. So I think that's an amazing opportunity for all the students, thanks to the support of the board and the community. Let's begin, sorry, I'm saying, um, this is, we offer a lot of technology courses here at Southhold. Students have an opportunity to take these courses that will help them develop skills that they can use in their everyday lives. They, these courses prepare the students for college, and especially for industry, if they don't decide to go to college. Some examples of those courses is Principles of Engineering. Soho TV is going to be on all three: on the electives, on technology, on college courses as well. So students are going to be learning communication skills, because students are going to be editing, filming, and most importantly, when I speak to the teachers and the students, they know they have a wider audience with Soho TV, not just, they're not just presenting to the, to their fellow friends or their teachers, they're doing it for a much wider audience. It's out there on YouTube, and the community gets to see what's going on in the school. I get to see what's going on in the school. Sometimes I get lost in my, in my room there. But it's great to see that the kids are doing it, and it's all produced by kids. So they, this is also a great outlet for them to continue on their own, or on their career path, and also in, in college. So, and it's nice to see that the audience is alumni, community members, families, and like I said, it's all produced and created by kids. So there are more electives that I probably could have added besides this here. Even language is added to electives. Introduction to Coding is a big one with these kids these days. Public Speaking and Debate, Acting, the Ratsi Program. We now have a new elective child development and architectural drawing. Like I said, Soho TV is also an elective, that's not included in there, but they can take it for college courses, or they could take it for just an elective, Soho 1 and 2 for students in grades nine through 12. So all of these courses, electives, AP, and the college courses, all prepare them for real-life situations, and they learn a lot of skills.
These are just some of our more notable electives. There's a lot more electives than this, but the problem is, you know, we didn't have time to do a 50-slide presentation, so, you know, if you really want to see all the electives that we have available, you can go right onto the course catalog on our website under our guidance tab, and it'll list all of them.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to have Lisa speak to Dr. Semenetti on this slide.
You're welcome. Can you click on that link, Eric, or do I? I keep going there.
Yeah, the computer's on the front.
Oh, yeah? Sorry. My apologies.
So what I'm, what we're sharing with you is the Southhold Junior and Senior High School profile. Every high school prepares a high school profile. It's used as a marketing tool. Sometimes when you, you know, you're looking for a community to buy a home in, a real estate agent might share a high school profile to boast about all the things that the high school and the community offers. But for our purposes here in the high school, it's something, it's, it's found on our website, and it's also in our Naviance program. Naviance is the program that we use, and many, many schools across the country use for students applying to college. They, all our college applications are done through Naviance and Common App, which is all connected. So the purpose of this is really to highlight all of the things here that we do in Southhold, and to really boast about the robust programs that we have, not just the academic, but also the extracurricular. Also, our test results, some statistics that we update every single year. We show how many of our students, you know, graduate with regents diplomas, with advanced, with advanced regents, how many attend four-year college, how many AP exams our students take, which types of schools they apply to. And what this does for college admissions teams is it gives them an apples-to-apples comparison of our students as compared to other students from around the country. So they might look at, you know, an applicant from Southhold and say, well, this student took 15 AP and college courses as compared to, you know, another applicant from a larger district, let's say, Sachem, like where I went, where they might have many more, because they're so much larger, you know, there's thousands of students, so they offer, you know, more college and more AP-level courses. So it helps the colleges to make that comparison, to understand that our students have taken everything that Southhold has offered to them as compared to other different-sized schools, different types of schools throughout the country. So it's really an opportunity for us to demonstrate all that we do, to boast about our excellent statistics that show how our students do on our AP exams, how our, you know, how our graduation rate, our, our four-year college rate. So it's really, like I said, an opportunity for us to boast about all the things that we offer here at Southhold, and all the things that we do, and like I said, it gives college admissions teams that apples-to-apples comparison, we're looking at Southhold applicants as compared to other students around the country.
When you look at districts that are similar in size to us, our offerings are, they're impressive compared to other districts that are our size. Actually, our offerings are similar to districts that are significantly larger than us in size. And when, when colleges look at that, and they see that you had a 93 average, and you were taking these offerings compared to just the basic offerings, it gives them a better opportunity to decide who was more inclined to do well in school. You know, so it's a tool that really allows our kids to have a better opportunity moving forward with colleges.
Absolutely. Yeah, I was just going to say also, you know, as a guidance counselor, I was a guidance counselor, I'm always a guidance counselor at heart, but I oversee the guidance department, and, you know, again, this is, this is our, this, again, is our way of just highlighting everything that we do, and, you know, one of the things I want to point out is that, you know, Patricia shared the minimum requirement that New York State requires, right? It's 22 credits overall. But what Southhold offers is so much more than that. And again, so this is a wonderful opportunity to show all the things that we do, all the things that we offer. We offer so much more than so many other schools, and like Dr. Morrow said, many of the bigger school districts, we offer just as much and even more. So we're very fortunate to have the support of our community so that we can, you know, continue to offer such, you know, such a diverse array of opportunities that appeal to all the interest levels of all of our students. Oh, hi, Jordan. I mentioned that I oversee the, the guidance office. So across from the main office, we have our counseling suite, where we have our school psychologist, our social worker, our guidance counselors, and also our transition counselor. So these are all, it's kind of like one-stop shopping, and for the students who are in the room, I'm sure they can attest to this, you can, you know, go and talk to the social worker about things that, you know, might be, that you might be dealing with in your personal life, but then you can also stop in and see the guidance counselor because you want to have a conversation about your college applications, or you need to make a change to your schedule, or you need to facilitate a conversation with a teacher, and maybe the guidance counselor can help you out with that. We also have our transition counselor in there, and she does a great deal of work in helping our students with the community service hours that are required here in Southhold. She does a great deal with facilitating internship placements for students, work experiences, resumes. She helps many of our students with their college applications as well, specifically for students with disabilities. She has a very specific skill set in that area, and is able to connect with different colleges and support our students with disabilities who are applying to college. So it's, we have a true counseling suite with all the services that our students need. We feel very strongly about educating the whole child, and it's important that students are, their well-being and their mental health and well-being is significant, because if they're not in a good place emotionally or psychologically, it's going to be very hard for them to learn while in school. So it's very important to us to provide these services and make sure that students know where to go and know how to access support if they need it. I mentioned our transition counselor. We have a great deal of community involvement. She actually goes out into the community. She's a part of the business advisory in Southhold, the Town of Southhold Youth Bureau. She participates in, on various committees, and goes out and interfaces with all of these different community agencies. We have so many of our students who work in these community places, or do internships there, do job shadowing opportunities there. They've hosted our students with disabilities for real-life work experience, and these are just some of them. We have so many more. We also do a job fair every year, where many of these community agencies come and try and recruit our students for part-time jobs, for summer jobs, internships. So we do a great deal of work, you know, beyond the walls of this school, and just collaborating with the different community agencies and colleges. There's a great deal of work that goes on behind the seeds and all these collaborations to, to provide all the different opportunities that we're able to provide for our students.
So I just want to say thank you to the entire Southhold community for their support and the way that students should take advantage of the courses that we offer, in addition to the electives, AP classes, and the college courses. Thank you very much.
Does anyone have any questions, or?
Sure. And one of the things I did want to point out is that our students, many of our students start with regent's level courses in eighth grade, and we have a nine-period day, so you're required to get 22 credits to graduate, but you have the opportunity to get closer to 32 to 34 credits in Southhold. Hence, the reason that we have, you know, really such a vast array of offerings, you know, and the reason that we're able to have them is that we have a very supportive community who supports our budget every year, and our kids are willing to take them, but they range from AP Physics to Pharmacology. You know, we have kids out in the greenhouse, learning things that have happened on the North Fork of Long Island, and they may leave here and, and stay right in that profession when they go, or they may, you know, they may go to Princeton into an advanced science program like we've had kids in the last couple of years do. So, you know, it really runs the gamut, and it's difficult in a small place to offer that much. You know, we're able to offer it because our community is willing to allow us to offer a lot more than what we're just required to offer. You know, our required offerings could be filled by the end of junior year, easily, probably halfway through junior year, you know. So it's nice to have all of these different things that, that our kids can avail themselves of. Sometimes they'll take them, and they'll realize, this is not for me, and it's really much nicer to learn that in 11th grade than it is in sophomore year of college, being a person who changed their major three times. You know, that's a much better option. So, you know, thank you to our, you know, to everybody who comes down and supports it, and thank you to our kids who are, you know, a lot of our electives are chosen by our kids. You know, we don't run electives and then put them in them. They pick electives, and then those are the ones that we run. You know, so it's good that they do that, too. So if we have any questions?
Of course. You know I do. I want to thank you guys, because I know how much work this was, and I want to thank the community, because as Dr. Morrow and you guys said, if a budget doesn't pass, we really don't have any of this. And we've talked as a board, certainly Scott and I have talked for years, we'd like to see what a real bare-bones thing would be. You know, if the budget doesn't pass, and I'd like to see this further in the elementary school, because I know we offer a lot, as well in our elementary, that's not required by the state. I think that would be an interesting
Absolutely.
...presentation as well.
Sure.
Because I think it's important, not just for the community, but for its board members, for us to know this. I'll do my, I don't have that many questions, and they're really not hard.
Okay.
I know there was some talk, and you brought it up briefly, about New York State just getting rid of the regents, and as other states have done. I'm just curious as to your thoughts on it, and do you think it'll happen? Will it happen anytime soon?
Dr. Morrow and I were just chatting about this the other day, because we both went to separate presentations in our, you know, respective professional networks, where, like, I went to one where Chris Oriano from the New York State Board of Regents presented, and I think Dr. Morrow went to something similar with his network, and they're talking about it. They're saying that they want to move to one regent's diploma, one diploma for all.
But aren't they talking about getting rid of the regents totally?
So they never, yeah, they never actually
They haven't been clear.
...talked about getting rid of the regents.
Yeah.
What they talk about is adding alternate options, so I might not
See, the media got that mixed up, didn't they?
Yeah. I may not have to take a social studies regent's, because I might be able to show my knowledge of social studies in this
Okay.
...broad range differently.
Understood.
Maybe it's through project-based learning, maybe it's through authentic presentation, similar to when you defend a dissertation. You know, you hand in a big, long paper, but then you stand up there for a couple of hours, and they grill you on questions, and you have to answer them all, you know, and that is really your test. You know, it's not all those tests you took to get there. It's standing in front of that six or eight people who have doctor listed after their name, and they're asking you questions. That is your ability to show the knowledge that you learned and that you present. So they're talking about alternate ways. They, they've, people have taken it as we're getting rid of the regents. They, I was there last week, and they were very, very cautious to not say, we're getting rid of the regents.
Okay.
What they've said is, we're going to look to add alternate pathways that kids can show that they've learned the knowledge. And then there, you know, there are kids that the regents work really, really well for.
Isn't that what a local diploma does, though, in a sense?
Not really. Well, a local diploma is more for students in different, like, subgroups who might not be able to meet the typical standards
Right, right.
...like Patricia presented, that 65% passing rate. So there's, there's safety nets for other populations, you know, for different populations of students, so, but what was explained at the conference I went to is that, you know, they're moving towards one diploma, I think she talked about it a little bit, where it would be one diploma, but different varieties of seals. Like, right now, we offer the
Like the biliteracy seal.
...career and tech ed endorsement, or a biliteracy seal, or seal of civic readiness.
Okay.
Yeah. But he was pretty clear in saying, don't expect this to happen in the next couple of years.
Of course not.
It's a long time out. And when you think about it, like, I don't even want to say how long ago I went to high school, but this is a longstanding history in New York State of regents exams, unlike any other state in the country, and it, we don't see it going anywhere soon.
Time to change.
Okay, Daniel's, and then I just have one more
Sure.
...that I'll ask. I know we offer a great deal more APs than we did just a few years ago, and I'm really happy about that and proud of that. I'd like to ask, and I don't expect you to have the answer, but maybe you could get it to us, is, it's one thing offering them, how do our students do on them is another thing?
Our students do really well. In fact, you can see
They score three or higher
Yes.
If you go to the, if you go to the
If you look at the high school profile, it shows how many of our students, yeah.
I'm just curious, because I think that's important to know as well.
Absolutely, because without scoring at least a minimum of a three on the AP exam, you're not really getting the college credit.
Right, right.
So you've gained, you know, you've learned the content, you've participated in the course, in the course, you've had that exposure, but without, you know, earning that three or over, you're not getting the college credit, so.
Yeah, okay, for that.
Yeah. But I could certainly
No, it's, it's just, I'm glad to hear.
Yeah, yeah. We've just added a couple more last year in foreign language, and a couple more college courses this year in music, which is really fabulous. You know, it's, it's been a wonderful partnership, and we, we actually have colleges, like, the newest one is through Five Towns College for, for music.
Yeah.
And they actually reached out to, or I actually went to a presentation, I contacted, you know, because I heard other schools were doing it, let's South, you know, Southhold needs to get on board, and, right, it's been an excellent collaboration, and it's been that way with, with all of the colleges that we've worked with.
Is that Five Towns a big
Music.
Yeah, for, but for Soho TV, it would
Yeah.
...align with as well.
They actually come to our musicals, and they have contacted kids after the musicals and offered them partial scholarships
Oh, that's cool. That's great.
And acceptance, you know, so.
A lot with drama, theater, production, the arts, music, yeah.
Things that we value are very, so does, so does Five Towns.
The things that are not required that we offer.
All of them are not required, yeah.
I'm sorry, just got to throw that out there.
They enrich our kids.
Well, it's true. We offer, we offer so much more than the state actually requires, like, it's, it, we're really, we're really fortunate, and again, it's, you know, because of the support of this wonderful community that we're able to do the things that we do, you know, so. Thank you.
Board members, any more questions?
How many students avail themselves of the college courses?
Wow.
Now, is that the, is it done remotely, or is it done, you get the coursework for the week?
Our teachers have to
Our teachers have to, so, our teachers have to actually share their certifications and their resumes with, and their official college transcripts with the universities that we collaborate with, because first off, the, the colleges want to see that our teachers are highly qualified to teach these courses as college professors in a high school. So there's that alignment, and then, so I was like directly involved in the Five Towns one. We have to send our course catalog to Five Towns, they review it, they look at their course catalogs to see which of their courses align best with our courses, and then when we start that partnership, that's when they want to see that, you know, our teachers are highly qualified to teach these courses.
They're teaching their, their syllabus.
We're teaching their curriculum, correct?
Very close to it.
Now, do our teachers gain any professional credit for teaching a college course?
I mean, the only, I guess I could say, you know, for, for a resume, the teachers could certainly say that they're teachers of, you know, they're adjunct professors of college courses, certainly, so that's certainly an accolade, for sure.
They want to benefit our teachers as well.
Absolutely, absolutely, for sure. It's definitely an accolade for our teachers, I would say, absolutely. Yeah.
Do you have those numbers?
Oh, the numbers.
I don't, I have all the, I have a whole chart with the courses. I, I do actually have the, the tally numbers of all of our courses, so I could provide that to you.
Just want to make sure that it's being used.
Absolutely. They're, they're all being used, actually. I could definitely follow up with you with all of those numbers, yeah.
Can we look at those APs and electives to see how many kids are in each class every year, so we don't run classes with one or two kids? That would not be cost-effective either to our community.
Yeah. I mean, like I said, well, I could, I could put it all together, but definitely, if you, if you want to look a little bit closer, at the high school profile, it does list all of the kids who, just in the 23-24 school year, took, took advantage of all of our AP courses. But we could put it all together with AP and college in one, you know, in one form for you.
Put together AP and college courses and enrollment in each.
Yep.
We're also obviously supportive of, if we do have a course, an AP course that's, might not run because of lack of bodies looking to Greenport and
Absolutely.
And Matituck
Yeah.
To offer them to come and, and run the To offer them to come and, and run the course.
Sure. Absolutely, yeah.
We had a conversation about that with physics this year. We actually thought we had it worked out. The hardest part, um, and when we talk about this at a work session later in the year, when we go over enrollment and everything else, we'll talk more about it. The most difficult part has been schedules.
Our schedules are not entirely aligned and transportation.
And it's, and it's aligned them because the bus companies, the bus companies that bring our kids here use those same buses to bring our neighboring schools in. So they can't do it at the same time because we tried to align some schedules to, to give kids some of these opportunities. And, you know, when they reach, when we reached out to the bus companies, they said, no, we can't get the buses there at that time because they're dropping at Greenport at that time.
But we made it work not too many years ago before COVID, the year before COVID.
When I, when I first came to Southhold, we, we had a chemistry course that we shared with Greenport.
Our students went to Greenport and they came here for a business class.
Yeah, but it, there's a lot that, you know, just in the transit alone, it's, students lose a lot of time and, you know, it, it, it limited the opportunities that they then had here because, and even though it's eight miles down the road, you know, there's still that, that transport time, um, and so it affects.
Walking in the building.
It does, it's, and it's tough. It's, you know, they have a different bell schedule in our neighboring schools than we do, so you factor that in and then the transit time and
Look at some of the ones that we do share, because we are sharing numerous things. And, and then we're going to look at what other opportunities we possibly will have. It's going to be a work session that we're going to do later in the year. And then we will also look at, uh, enrollment trends in all three districts and, you know, which is really the impetus for it. You know, um, we don't want to lose these things that we have established now. Um, and, and you can't run a class with one student or two students, you know, um, so.
Perhaps there's virtual opportunities to consider, like, you know, synchronous learning between the, the three schools.
I'd love to have that.
You know, then we don't have to worry about transit and transportation and
Harder than you think.
I know, I know. Just throwing it out there, thinking on the fly.
We started, we started the conversation with the superintendents and it's
Yeah.
I think AP would, if you have to have that asynchronous, I think the, the students that are, are reaching for AP classes, all of the cohort, that, that, the bad parts of that sort of learning, they're, they're probably better able to deal with.
Yep.
For sure. I actually taught AP psychology years ago and it was an online course, and this is well before COVID and before we really mastered virtual learning. Um, so it was many years ago, but, um, but you're right. It's a, it's a different type of, you know, group of students who, you know, have that level of dedication, of responsibility, it's a completely different, you know, as we know. So, um, but it, you know, there's, the possibilities are endless.
Maybe at our October meeting you can provide us with this year's enrollment numbers, because I know the beds are due in October, I think. So that would be great if we could get, and again, if we could, you know, look at the elementary and see what great stuff we do down there.
Yeah, for sure.
I think it's important.
Absolutely.
For the community.
Need more internship hours.
That's how you spent your summer, this is how you spent your summers.
So you have to get, uh, to get your admin degree, you gotta put in a certain, a couple hundred hours. So when you get projects like this, because this is not as cut and dry of a project as you think, like, it's easy to say you need 22 credits, but trying to figure out what you offer, that you have to offer and what you offer because your community chooses to, uh, you know, support you in offering more is a very complicated thing, you know, like, um, it's not anywhere near as easy as you think. So, so Patricia put in a lot of time over the summer, um, met with Lisa, met with myself and, and looked at a lot of different things. So thank you very much for doing that.
You're welcome.
And if you need another project, we have an elementary project coming up.
Let me go get started.
Need more hours.
Thank you both very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you everyone, thank you.
That brings us, we usually do presentations before anything else because it's kid related and they get to leave, but you guys are stuck, I guess. We'll get, we'll get by this quickly. That brings us to our first hearing of visitors. At this hearing, we ask that questions and comments be kept to agenda items only. Does anybody care to address the board now for agenda items? No? Okay. That brings us to our consent agenda, which includes the following, the approval of our minutes of our regular meeting of August 28th. It also includes our financial matters. Included in the financial matters are the schedule of bills for the month of August of the general fund, the treasurer's report for the month of August, the monthly budget status report for the month of August. It also includes transfers and the extra classroom activity fund for the month of August. We're surplusing some chairs, old chairs it looks like, and it includes a contract with Riverhead School District for specialized services. Do board members have any questions about the consent agenda? Oh, I'm sorry, it also includes the CSEs, my apologies. Any questions from board members?
No.
Is there a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Speaking of our community and support in our budget, this brings us to our establishment of our tax levy. We do this every September or October. In May, the taxpayers approved the 2024, 2025 general fund budget in the amount of The tax levy associated with this budget is estimated to be an increase of 2.81% from the 2023, 2024 budget. I need a resolution, if we do a res, okay, a resolution establishing the tax levy for the 2024, 2025 school year at $30,253,589. Are there any questions regarding this?
Just a question, the difference in the, the two figures on the, uh,
It's the amount of money that is raised by taxes and the amount of money that we get from the state.
Okay, so that's the difference?
That's the difference.
That's the money we're getting from the state.
Did I explain that, Mr. Scheid?
Yes.
And, and reserves.
Reserves and all of that, the, the non-tax money from the community. Sorry. Is there a motion to accept?
No.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I don't think, we have any old business, sir? No, right? Okay, that brings us to our superintendent's report.
Yep.
Oh, look at enrollment was on there.
Yes, so
I guess I didn't pay attention.
And enrollment, I'm going to skip because we're going to spend time, well, I'll, I'll present just what our current enrollment is next month. It's not terribly different than what we had projected. You know, we're in the thirties with our kindergarten, 31, 32, um, which was a little bit smaller than I thought. I projected around 40, but, um, you know, other than that, we're holding fairly steady. We did have some new students from New Suffolk now that they, uh, you know, are here. Four or five kids came over on the elementary level, uh, but we'll do full enrollment next month and then when we do our work session later in the year, we'll look at a lot of enrollment and why, you know, we're looking at sharing programs and stuff like that. Start of the year has been absolutely wonderful. Um, I was at, um, need to teacher night, last night over at the elementary school. It was great to see everybody. Um, last week we had it here at the high school, uh, was also there and, and got to be there. It is, it's spirit week up here now. I'm not going to talk much about that, um, because that's yours. Um, and, um, you know, it's really just, it, it's been a very nice smooth start and, um, that doesn't happen unless, um, your teachers, your administrators, your kids, your parents, uh, all work together to make it a smooth start. It doesn't happen because one group does it. It doesn't happen because, you know, it happens because we're all working towards one common goal to try to provide, uh, the best opportunities we have, um, you know, for, for our kids in our community. So, um, it's really, it's been a very nice start to the year. Uh, we switched over to parent square this year, which has allowed us to communicate a little bit better. We also put out a, um, a calendar, um, to everybody in our community to hopefully, um, edify people about more of the events. You know, we have a lot of wonderful events that go on in Southhold, our productions and plays and, and homecomings and all these different things. And it's, you know, we have community members who don't have kids in school that, um, now will hopefully have a better opportunity to come and attend some of those things and, and enjoy them because quite honestly, they support our school district as much as anybody else. Um, so, you know, it, it really has been a great start of the year. I know I said it last time, having the teachers and the kids back in the building is wonderful. You know, school buildings really aren't meant to be quiet like they are in the summer. Um, and so it's great to have everybody back and I thank everybody who has worked so hard to make this start of the school year such a smooth start. Um, it's enjoyable seeing the kids around and seeing them at their sporting events and, and in their classes. And I've been lucky enough to visit probably 20, 25 classes already this year and, and, um, you know, you met with smiles, um, both here, which is not as common in the secondary level, um, and, and down at the elementary also. So, um, uh, you know, I'm looking forward to, um, moving right ahead. We have, you know, a lot of stuff going on, um, all throughout the district and, and thank you to everybody who worked so hard to make the start of the year such a wonderful start.
Thank you. That brings us to our personnel and the superintendent's recommendations are as followed. Employees leaving the district full-time permanent, Darren McEloney, resignation effective August 28th, 2024. Christopher Campos, um, who's a principal office assistant, resignation due to medical issues effective September 16th, 2024. Karen Everts taking a medical leave effective November 1st, 2024 for four to six weeks. Cindy Simko, revised retirement date from September 6th, 2025 to September 27th, 2025. Her last working date will be September 26th, 2025. Um, we have an employee entering full-time permanent, Helen Libby Fannin, um, will be changed from contingent to permanent, appointment effective September 17th, 2024. What's the position?
It's a principal office assistant.
Okay. Effective September 17th. And then we have a host of people, substitute teacher aides, substitute teachers, mentor pairs, um, after-school Spanish program, this is the elementary now, right? The after-school Spanish program, after-school play club, after-school activities, um, and then we have esports for the fall season, Amy Prager and David Barrett. Also under personnel are, I had the, I had the addendum, okay. Um, if we, and we also have a temporary athletic trainer, be it resolved, the Board of Education authorized and approves the hiring of Joanna, Joanna Wasniewski as an athletic trainer on a temporary basis effective eight, yeah, I got it here, thank you, 8/15/2024. And a title change that, um, Dr. Lisa Semenetti's title is hereby changed from Director of Pupil Personnel Services to Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services effective immediately. Be it further resolved that since the two positions are similar in accordance with relevant positions of the New York State Education, Dr. Semenetti's status as a tenured employee carries over to a new title. We also have, um, for the fall drivers ed, educate, fall drivers education instructor, Jason Wasniewski has replaced in Eric Friend. Did I get them all, Patty? Well, look at all these papers in front of me. Um, I do just have a quick question on the athletic trainer. That's on our campus here. So if we're hosting sports with the other districts, do we charge for her services? I don't want to be a panic bincher, I just got to look at our tax dollars.
Uh, no, because each, each district has one.
Oh, they do? Okay, okay. So that evens out?
Yeah.
Perfect.
So it evens out.
Better, yeah. Okay. Are there any other questions concerning the
I have a question on the title change for Dr. Semenetti. Um, we had previous discussion about a position description, was that finalized?
It was sent to you.
It was sent to us, we did receive it.
About three weeks ago.
About three weeks ago.
I can send it again.
Please, if you could, uh, my apologies, thank you.
No problem.
Tom, I think it was with our, um, board update.
I believe so, but I'll, I'll send it again.
All right, my apologies, thank you.
Don't worry.
Okay, is there a motion to accept?
No.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finance committee report. Who's on finance? You and
Yeah.
You get nothing? Building committee is you and Mr. Tobin, right? You guys haven't met, right?
No.
Okay. Policy committee, Mr. Latham?
We have, uh, policy revisions for adoption. Well, they're listed in the agenda. I move we adopt, we adopt them.
This is our second read, right?
Yes, second read.
Okay. Motion by Sky, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. National cheer competition, Southhold varsity cheerleading team plans to attend the UCA Nationals in Orlando, Florida, February 6th to the 10th. The team will fundraise to cover the cost of the trip. May I have a motion to approve the varsity cheerleading team's trip to attend the UCA Nationals in Orlando, Florida, February 10th to the 16th?
I'll make a motion. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I'm sure Ms. Cohen down there could speak to that as well. When we get to our, uh, new business. I think we've had enough new business tonight. Okay, that brings us to our second hearing of visitors. We'll entertain any comments and questions about agenda items and school matters in general. Just come up to the microphone and state your name, please, if you care to address us or ask us questions. Anybody?
Good evening, folks. Good evening, members of the school board and, um, happy National Hispanic Heritage Month to everyone. My name is Nick Antonucci. I serve on the town of Southhold's Anti-Bias Task Force. And the co-chairs of the Anti-Bias Task Force, Emily Geiger and Sylvia Daly, have tasked me to be the liaison to Southhold School District. And so I'm just here to introduce myself tonight and offer my full support to the district and our shared goals of fostering an inclusive and equitable school environment. And as we begin the academic year, I want to assure you that the Anti-Bias Task Force is here as a resource for any matters related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so whether supporting any ongoing initiatives here, offering guidance, or simply being available for collaboration, um, we are ready to assist you in any way we can to ensure that all the students, the staff, and the families feel safe and respected in our schools. So I look forward to working with you and I'm excited about the, um, opportunities this year holds for us. So thank you for your time and dedication for our students and our community.[1582.63] So thank you for your time and dedication for our students and our community. So thank you, members of the board.
Thank you. It's nice having a student, former student's dad doing such a job. Thank you, Nick. Does anyone else care to address the board at this time? No? Okay. That brings us to our board member commentary. Ms. Cullen, you get to start. You just tell us what's going on. I know school just started and, and use the microphone.
Pull that mic up a little bit if you like.
Use the microphone. Oh, you have a cheerleading voice. You don't really have to use the microphone.
Thank you. I'm happy to be back for the school year. I'm happy to see everyone. All the sports teams are in full swing. I'm a senior now, so I, my goal is to attend a game for every sport. So far, I've gone to a couple. They all look great. This week is spirit week. I'm really happy that it's spirit week. And Friday is our spirit day and homecoming dance. For our themes this week, we've had tropical day, anything but a backpack day, and USA Day. And the rest of the themes are character day, and then Friday is our class color day with our class shirts. So, yeah.
And Saturday is?
Saturday is our homecoming games. I believe there's girls soccer, boys soccer, and then girls tennis. I might be missing one, I'm not exactly sure. Cross country, yeah. So, yeah.
Great, thank you. Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy, I'm sorry, I can't.
Thank you.